Good afternoon, colleagues. The November 16th, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2 o'clock PM. I'm Lauren Aguazales, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lewis.
Present.
Morales.
Here.
Mosqueta.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Here.
Strauss.
Present.
Herbold.
Here.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. If there is no objection, Councilmember Juarez will be excused from today's City Council meeting. Hearing no objection, Councilmember Juarez is excused from today's meeting. Okay, colleagues, as I mentioned this morning during council briefing, the governor and the state legislature leadership extended the Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act proclamation, which limits in-person meetings during this ongoing pandemic. The City Council rules are silent on allowing remote meetings and electronic participation at City Council and committee meetings. So the City Council does anticipate continuing to meet electronically and remotely through at least December 7th, 2020. So in order to allow for that to occur, we'll need to make a formal suspension of our council rules. If there is no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow council members to hold remote meetings and to participate electronically at City Council and committee meetings through at least December 7th, 2020. Hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended, and the council will hold remote meetings and participate electronically at both full council meetings and committee meetings through at least December 7th of 2020. Presentations. I'm not aware of any presentations, so we'll go ahead and move to approval of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meeting of November 9th, 2020 have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? Adoption of the referral calendar. If there is no objection, the proposed introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Public comment. Colleagues, at this time, you will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and council's 2020 work program. As a reminder, there is a separate public hearing on Council Bill 119907, which is Agenda Item 1 on this afternoon's agenda. That bill relates to the mobile home park redevelopment moratorium extension. I want to thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate a remote public comment system. And again, as a reminder, for the public hearing portion, we won't be calling on those individuals until we have arrived at Agenda Item 1. At that time, the clerk will read the Agenda Item into the record, and at that point, we'll hear some brief remarks from Councilmember Strauss, and then I will open up the public hearing and call on those who have pre-registered for the public hearing. So this afternoon, at the top of the agenda, we'll just hear general public comment, and those who signed up to call in on Council Bill 119907 will be called on when I open the public hearing in relation to Agenda Item 1. It does remain our strong intent to continue to have remote public comment on our meeting agendas. As a reminder, the City Council does reserve the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period for this meeting, for this portion of the meeting, is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I'll call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you've not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to council's website at seattle.gov/council. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of "You have been unmuted" will then be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak, but the speaker must press *6 to begin speaking. So again, speakers who have signed up today, you're going to hear "You have been unmuted", wait for that prompt, and then press *6, and then we will be able to hear you. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. As a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, or the council's 2020 work program. Speakers will hear a chime at about 10 seconds. That means that you have 10 seconds to wrap up your public comment, and if you don't wrap up your public comment in that period of time, your speaker will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we'd ask that you please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, please do so via Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the agenda. I'm going to now go ahead and open up the public comment period. We're going to begin with the first speaker on the list. Again, please remember to press *6 after you hear the prompt of "You have been unmuted". So the first speaker is Melissa Purcell, followed by, give me just a minute, Melissa Purcell, followed by Barbara Lee.
Hello, my name is Melissa Purcell. I'm a member of the Seattle Film Task Force. I'm also a business agent for IATSE Local 488. I'm also a prop master by trade in the film industry. Local 48 represents the crews that work on commercials, films, TV shows, corporate and web content. I'm here to address budget issues for the Office of Film and Music. I want to thank Councilmember Morales, Councilmember Strauss, and Councilmember Lewis for supporting the need for the Inclusive Creative Industry Policy Advisor position, the Special Events Lead position, and the Nightlife Advocate position. And I would like to ask that the full council also support retaining these positions and all staff positions at OFM, as each one is integral to the success of the other and their work with the creative industry. I would also like to ask for support of a budget of some size to support the work of the Future Film Commission. Our industry will be participants in the economic recovery of our region through the kind of work that we do, and it is the utmost importance that the Film Commission is lined up for success in supporting our industry's work. Additionally, I'd like to speak about our traffic coordination that SPD previously did for our line of work, as well as special events. That work is now halted as we re-envision what SPD's role will be. We are completely in support of re-imagining that traffic control and do not feel that a badge and a gun is required for traffic control, but as that work is now currently stopped, we need to address that as soon as possible so that we are not restricted. Our film industry is currently working. We do need that work completed. So we will ask that all stakeholders from OFM be included in any conversations about traffic coordination and who will do that role. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work.
Thank you for calling in. Next up is Barbara Lee, followed by Kimmy Condo.
Hello, I'm Barbara Lee, and I'm a constituent and volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I represent almost 6,000 supporters in Seattle. Since our last City Council testimony, there have been several shootings, including one taking the life of another black man, Marquise Patterson. The loss to his family and friends is an experience that no one should have to go through, although it's far too familiar for black people in this city. Communities impacted directly by gun violence and the groups doing the hard work to end it are the most knowledgeable about how to invest in making our city safer. That's why we appreciate the council including $30 million towards the community-led participatory budget process in its proposed balancing package. We also support the proviso on the $30 million remaining in the inequitable communities initiative to ensure alignment with the participatory budget recommendations. We would like to see further investment in this more equitable process. We're encouraged to see the council reallocate $10 million for community-led safety investments. We store $1 million towards alternatives to the criminal legal system and $550,000 towards a restorative justice pilot program in our schools. We're also happy to see the restoration of the $30 million for the previously approved strategic initiative fund. However, it's important to remember that this funding was already promised to BIPOC communities and is not a new investment. The COVID pandemic has stripped away our city funds like we could never have imagined, but making up for that loss should not come from BIPOC communities or from any previously approved equitable investments. We're also encouraged by the proposal to fund the Community Safety and Communications Center as an independent entity that aligns with alternative dispatch solutions that can help reduce police shootings. We urge the committee to adopt the proposed balancing package, and we urge the mayor and the City Council to continue to invest in the needs and priorities of the black community using a true participatory budget process. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Our next speaker is Kimmy Condo, and then we're going to go back up to Susan LaSalle, who is now appearing to be present.
Yes, this is Kimmy Condo. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle Indian Center. Since my retirement from the Seattle Municipal Court bench, I've been a board member for the Seattle Indian Center. The Seattle Indian Center currently occupies 6,000 square feet of space, and in 2014, the center was down at the Leshai Center on 12th Avenue, and the space that they occupied at that time was 12,000 square feet. They were, for what reasons I'm not sure, because it predated my time, they were essentially evicted from that space, and they were then not given a space equivalent in size. They'd been offered the space at 23rd and Yessler and then a space over at 17th and Jackson, none of which were adequate for their needs. At this point, we have totally outgrown our space. The 6,000 square feet is just not enough. We have a food bank there. We have 29,137 units of service in 2019, with more this year. We also have a community meal program Monday through Friday, and we serve breakfast and lunch. We serve 27,000 meals there, and we are actually in a crisis situation there because the COVID situation has meant that we are probably going to have to close that down if we don't get a bigger space because people are too close. We also have a community drop-in center there, and we have served 10,439 people in 2019. That includes spaces for people to come in and shower, do their laundry. The public health department comes in and gives flu shots and Hep A shots, and people can come in there and shelter the day. Hello?
Go ahead. You have a few more seconds.
Okay. And we also have a Seashore Hostel where working poor men can come in and pay $15 a night, and they can stay there. We also have outreach and engagement where we provided 98 sheltered spaces for people this year, and we found permanent housing for seven people. We also have an emergency food assistance program, and we provide emergency assistance for people. We just don't have the space. When we have board meetings, we have to keep people out until we finish a board meeting. We are jam-packed to the rafters, and we are looking for the $100 million of BIPOC community funds that you were talking about to provide us with a larger space and something equivalent.
Thank you so much, Judge Condo, for calling in. We didn't get the last few things that you said there, so feel free to email us at council@seattle.gov with the remainder of your comments. We'd be happy to take a look at those. Next up is Susan LaSalle, followed by a group, also from Seattle Indian Center. It's callers 10 and 11, Musa Sissé and Carolina Alanza. But first up is Susan LaSalle, Speaker number four.
Thank you. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Susan LaSalle. I've lived and worked in Seattle as a producer and director's guild unit production manager for over 25 years. I'd like to thank our Councilmember Morales, Councilmember Strauss, and Councilmember Lewis for working to retain all necessary staff positions at OFM, and ask that all council members support their work in the budget rebalancing. Each position is integral to the next in an eight-person department whose work supports all of the creative industry. Our industry provides well-paid jobs, supports other businesses, particularly those in hospitality and retail industries, as well as expanding tourism. The Future Film Commission, which represents a major metropolitan U.S. city, needs a budget. We had asked for $50,000, but at this juncture, we understand the difficulty due to the impact of the pandemic. We respectfully request a reasonable amount that will show that the council understands the need to support the work of a newly formed commission that will benefit our city and its workers. As a member of the Film Task Force, I can assure the council, we have charted an excellent course for the Film Commission, one of learning and working for inclusion, equity, and diversity in our industry, and identifying what the city needs to do to make the industry thrive. Film will be partner in our region's economic recovery. We are marketing, education, entertainment, corporate information, and sharing and storytelling. Additionally, our industry stakeholders of OFM should be included in meetings about traffic coordination, which was what the SPD formally did. The importance of that work is a priority as our film industry is currently working and is restricted with no new plan in place. We do support the new vision, no badge and gun, as these are not needed for traffic revisions when filming is taking place. Thank you, and I very much appreciate all of the work that you've been doing.
Thank you, Susan, for calling in today. Next up is a group, so we're going to cut the clock to three minutes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we are going to hear from Musa Sissé and Carolina Alanza from the Seattle Indian Center. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Musa Sissé. I used to be a client of Seattle Indian Center, but now I work for the Center. The most difficult problem we have here is space. Even office space, we don't have most of the program. The place is really tight. You know, it's really, really disturbing us. We cannot run all the programs that we need to do. We compare the space that we have, it's like a tennis court then compared to a football field. We used to have a lot of space to do different programs. Now even the one space that we have here is, used to be one of our, just one program over there. So we need a place immediately because...
I will be speaking now. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Carolina Alanza, Case Manager for Seattle Indian Center's Outreach and Engagement Program. We're here again in this meeting because Seattle Indian Center needs a larger building to better serve our clients. Councilmember Sawant, you're our district representative, and what would be the best way to contact you? We have tried calling and emailing for several weeks. I understand these are difficult times, but we would like to speak to somebody sooner than later. We feel this could be a win-win for the fact that we're able to make such a, take such a burden off of the city, as well as offer a plethora of services and resources. Seattle is third in the nation for homelessness. This is the population we serve, and we have been, we have seen much success in transitioning many people into homes or more stable environments. Time is of the essence, particularly with these vulnerable demographics, such as the one that we serve. Among the other reasons, this is why we are approaching you with such urgency in relation to obtaining a larger space. Each year, our numbers grow, and we have inadequate space to provide services for our clients. Thank you for listening to us. We hope to hear it from you soon. You can contact us at Seattle Indian Center's main number, 206-329-8700. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Myron Hartman, followed by Virginia Bogart. Do we have Myron on the call?
Myron is on the call. Yep.
Okay, Myron, looks like you are muted. Go ahead.
Okay, you got me. Okay, good. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the Office of Film and Music Budget. My name is Myron Hartman. I'm a Seattleite, born and raised. I'm a BIPOC camera op, boom operator in the film and video industry, and I'm also a member of the Film Task Force, and we've been working tirelessly to put in place a Film Commission in Seattle. And I'm here to talk, I'm here to ask that all staff positions for the Office of Film and Music be retained, and that when the Film Commission's lie is approved, that the Film Commission gets the budget of around $50,000. As an African American, I'm proud of the efforts that the Film Task Force has made to give BIPOC stakeholders a seat at the table, but there's a lot more, a lot more work to be done, and we need to push forward. Eliminating the OFM's Inclusive Creative Industry Policy Advisor and the Special Events Lead will be a huge step backwards, and it will be affecting BIPOC the most. The creative industry is the pillar of the 5G economy, and it affects every business. We need to have a structure in place when film, arts, music, and special events come back to spearhead the inclusive creative economy. I would like to thank Councilmembers Morales, Strauss, and Lewis for your support and efforts to retain the positions of the OFM, and would ask that all council members support it as well. Additionally, our industry stakeholders of the OFM should be included in the meetings about traffic coordination, which is what the SPD formally did. The importance of that work is a priority in our industry, the film industry, and is currently, and we are currently working, and is restricted with no new plan in place. So we do support the new vision, no badge, no gun, as these are not needed for traffic revisions and filming when filming is taking place. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Virginia Bogart, and then following Virginia will be David Haynes. Virginia, good afternoon.
Hello, council. I'm Virginia Bogart. I'm addressing the Office of Film and Music Budget as well. I'm a filmmaker and president emerita of the nonprofit Women in Film Seattle, and I've been working here in this industry for over three decades. I'm here today also to talk about retaining all necessary staff positions at the Office of Film and Music, and also to thank councilmembers Morales, Strauss, and Lewis for working to support this, and ask that all the council members support retaining these important positions in the budget rebalancing. Each of the eight people in this department support all the creative industries here. As a taxpayer, I really hope the council understands the importance of the film industry and our city's economy. We have families, homes, our kids go to schools here, we pay taxes, we buy local, and we contribute to this economy. It has been tough, and we have lost a lot of income, and Seattle has lost this income in the past from productions that don't come here or leave. The future Seattle Film Commission needs a budget. We ask for $50,000. I am also on the Seattle Film Task Force, and we have worked for a year charting a course for the Seattle Film Commission, working for inclusion, working for equity and diversity in our industry, and identifying what the city needs to do to make the industry and Seattle thrive. We filmmakers and crew have carved out a living from this industry, and we help provide that for others. We need city support. What we do creates other jobs, it boosts tourism, brings clientele to hotels and restaurants, among other ancillary businesses. Every other major city in the country recognizes the value of the film industry and works hard to make it possible to do production work here in the city. All our industries are...
Thank you for calling in today, Virginia. Next up is David Haynes.
Hello, this is David Haynes. Thank you, council. Difficult to get through. Perhaps City Council should consider disbanding the Historical Preservation Board out of principle that everything in Seattle is obsolete, and then use your pen that's mightier than a sword and begin to take a zero off all the commercial and residential real estate built in deregulated 20th century building codes still being used in 2020, that's shaking down renters and small businesses who were forced to use flawed, ill-fated designed buildings, leaving a teardown with a robust 21st century first-world quality build-out with jobs and equity. Instead, no offense, but Democrats and Republicans make the same shady banks wealthy that donate and own the two-party monopoly and allow tax dollars to preserve obsolete buildings of the past to help mortgage speculators, guaranteeing the rents are going to be paid, while intimidating workers with a war on the local houseless citizens, forsaken, discriminated against, forced into the sixth year of a homeless crisis, used to buy up activists and donors who own social welfare contracts, never investigated as to why Sharon Lee gets $12 million to build slums in the tiny villages, no offense, next year during election season for the homeless crisis now, when Sharon Lee can't even offer a shower and a laundry on the weekends in Ballard, and council refuses to investigate why a contractor of subhuman social welfare denies service, then gets most of the COVID emergency grants that were supposed to be used to now to send, or excuse me, to end the COVID homeless crisis that's been ongoing and proliferatingly exponentially compounded on the people's oppressed lives that are being denied access to homes and shelter. And, you know, instead, City Council wants to invest the homeless crisis COVID money in reelection apparatus that finances all the activists hiding within social welfare industry, shortchanging innocents and taxpayers.
Thank you for calling in today. That is our last speaker signed up for public comment today, so we're going to go ahead and end our public comment period and move into items of business on today's agenda. First up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title into the record?
Council Bill 119948, a property mine to pay certain claims for the week of November 2nd, 2020 through November 6th, 2020, and ordering payment thorough.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I moved to pass Council Bill 119948. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Are there any additional comments? Hearing no comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation? Committee reports are not being presented today, so we are moving into our first agenda item, which is a public hearing. Will the clerk please read Item 1 into the record?
Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119907, relating to land use zoning extending for six months a moratorium established by ordinance 125764 and extended by ordinances 126006 and 126090 on the filing acceptance processing and/or approval of any application to establish a new principal or accessory use or change of principal or accessory use for any sites currently used as a mobile home park as defined in Section 23.84A.032 of the Seattle municipal code.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that into the record. Before I open the public hearing on this item, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Strauss, as I mentioned at the top of this meeting. He is the prime sponsor of this bill and will provide us with some introductory remarks before we open up the period of the public hearing. Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. As you, as I mentioned earlier this morning in January 2019, the City Council first adopted emergency legislation to impose a temporary moratorium on redevelopment of mobile home park sites in Seattle. At that time, council expressed its intention to adopt permanent regulations to preserve mobile home parks and laid out a work plan for doing so in collaboration with the Department of Construction and Inspection and the Office of Planning and Community Development. Work on permanent regulations has taken longer than anticipated, and the moratorium has been extended two times to allow for additional time to complete that work. The current moratorium expires on January 8th, which is, I believe, just two days after we come back from council recess. This legislation would extend the moratorium for an additional six months to allow us time to finalize the permanent solution. I expect that this will be the last time the council has to extend this moratorium. My office has been working closely with Councilmember Juarez, who has provided immense amount of support, analysis, and help and assistance, and we expect to, her office and her to co-sponsor the legislation that will adopt the permanent regulations in the first quarter of next year. Again, her office has been, and she, Councilmember Juarez, has been very helpful and dedicated to assisting the residents of housing on mobile home park, as well as other residents in District 5, and has helped us coordinate with city departments to inform that work. I want to thank her for her ongoing attention to resolving the issues in a meaningful way and for making sure that it was on the land use and... and neighborhoods committee's work plan as a top priority this term. I also want to thank Councilmember Sawant for bringing this issue to council in the first place a few years ago. And so again, Councilmember Juarez and I will be bringing a permanent solution to our council in this next year. So this temporary extension hopefully is the last, and its duration is six months. And this item is on the agenda for today simply as a public hearing, as required by state law, anytime we make changes to the land use code. And we expect the bill to be before full council on November 30. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss, for those introductory remarks. We're going to go ahead and move into the public hearing at this point in time. As presiding officer, I am now opening the public hearing on Council Bill 119907, relating to the Mobile Home Park Redevelopment Moratorium Extension. The online registration to sign up to speak opened at 12 o'clock noon today, and I will call on speakers in the order of preregistration. The online registration will remain open until the conclusion of this public hearing. The same rules applied to the public comment period will be applied to this public hearing. Each speaker will be provided two minutes, and speakers will hear a chime when they have 10 seconds left of their allotted time. Speakers' microphones will be muted at the end of the allotted public comment time. And public comment relating to Council Bill 119907 is only being accepted at this public hearing. Speakers are asked to begin their comments by stating their name. And again, only a public comment relating to Council Bill 119907 is being accepted at this public hearing. After you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, the speaker will need to press star six in order for us to be able to hear you. Again, we have a handful of speakers who have signed up for today. I'm going to pull up my little sheet here. We have a couple of speakers who are signed up and present. We do have two speakers who have signed up but are showing up as not present. So in the hopes that they're hearing or listening to this hearing, I'm going to say their names, and hopefully they'll call in. So we have John Lombard, Brent McFarland, and we also have Doug Conrad and Linda McCoy. And Doug Conrad and Linda McCoy, if you are listening and would like to still provide public comment, now is the time to call back in to the number provided to you by our IT in order to be able to do so. So first up is John Lombard, followed by Brent McFarland.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is John Lombard. I live in the Northgate area and have worked with leaders of seven community groups neighboring the Halcyon and Bella B mobile home parks in support of a long-term solution to protect their affordable housing and their communities. I've been in touch with aides of Councilmembers Juarez and Strauss and understand from them, as well as from Councilmember Strauss's remarks today, that there finally has been progress on this solution, but the formal legislation will not be ready for consideration until the first quarter of next year. It's a shame it's had to wait this long, but this is good news, and I'm very glad to hear it. I want to thank Councilmember Juarez, Councilmember Strauss, and their staffs for their attention to this. I'm asking you to please support this extension of the moratorium on new land uses for these properties. And when it arrives, to please support a long-term solution that protects these communities and their affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for calling in. And next up is Brent. And then we will hear from Linda McCoy. And Doug Conrad, if you're listening, now is the time to call back in. Next up is Brent.
Hello, council. My name is Brent McFarland, and I live in District 5 in the Bitter Lake neighborhood. We're a neighboring community to Halcyon. And we've been concerned about the plight of folks at these mobile home parks for over two years now. They've been in limbo about their future. And I was very glad to hear that there is serious work being done now to find a more permanent solution. And I would like to thank Councilmembers Strauss and Juarez for doing that work. I do hope you'll get the full cooperation of the mayor and OPCD. But I do also want to emphasize that it's so important that in this process, this housing remains affordable. These folks are, many of them are retired in place. And maintaining the affordability of this community is key. And it also means a lot to the stability of the entire surrounding area. They're good neighbors, and we'd like to see them stay. So thanks. And we'll be watching this, especially in the first quarter of 2021, hoping to see a happy outcome for folks here. And thanks for your support. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Brent, for calling in. Next up is Linda McCoy. Linda, good afternoon. Linda, just go ahead and hit star six to unmute yourself, and we'll be able to hear you.
Council President, Linda's coming through as a not on the phone as a client. We're allowing her, so she just has to hit mute. Linda, can you just hit mute on your Zoom application?
There we go.
Am I unmuted now?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, good. Thank you. There's a feedback, and I'm just going to have to ignore it. I hope you're not getting it.
We are not hearing it. Yeah, we're not hearing it.
Okay, I'll just try my best. So, yes, I'm the president of the HOA Association here at Halcyon, and we've been working for almost two years. I guess, yeah, really two years to save our homes. I really appreciate the comments of the previous speaker because the financial aspect is super important. And I know that what's up today is really the rezone issue and the land use so that we are not sold with our houses, not having a place to be, to be. So, yeah, I'm supportive of what work is being done. And thanks, thanks to Councilmember Juarez and Councilmember Strauss for working with us on this. It looks like good progress is happening. So I'm going to stay in touch with what's happening with that. If you have any questions of me, go ahead and ask them. Otherwise, I'm just here to say yes, please.
Thank you, Linda, for calling in and giving that testimony. Really appreciate it. Okay, so last call for Doug Conrad. I do not see him showing up as present. So we are going to go ahead and close out the period of public comment. Thank you, colleagues, for that. That was our last speaker remotely present to speak at this public hearing. The public hearing on Council Bill 119907 is now closed. The bill is scheduled for a vote at the November 30, 2020, City Council meeting. And the council is still accepting comments via email Other business? Is there any other business, further business to come before the council? Councilmember Mosketa, please.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to take a quick second to recognize that many across the world celebrated Diwali and New Year's, welcoming good over evil and light over darkness, a much-needed thing for us to celebrate right now. And I wanted to say Happy Diwali and Happy New Year to all who celebrated this weekend.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Mosketa. Any other further business to come before the council? All right. Well, colleagues, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda.